Everybody ready? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February 14th Board of Supervisors meeting. And happy Valentine's Day to those who celebrate. Please join us in our customary moment of silence before we start dealing with the business of the day. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Are there any special actions? Mr. Solicitor?
No special actions.
Okay. This is our first round of public comment. For business that is not on the agenda this evening, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Residents are invited to speak first, and please keep your comments brief.
John DiApril, Newtown Grant, biggest and best. Also would like a moment of silence for the person who was killed at the Kansas City Victory Parade and the other ones that were injured. It's a shame that, you know, the nice thing they want to celebrate their teams winning, and, you know, someone was killed. And I wasn't even rooting for them. I was rooting for San Francisco. Like to thank the manager and the Public Works Department for cleaning the streets with the snow. They did a very good job. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Are there any minor approvals tonight? Did we do that? No. Okay, no. That brings us to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. We have the Planning Commission here with Peggy Driscoll. Thanks, Peg.
Good evening, Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Planning Commission, to give you a synopsis of our February 6 meeting. Our first item on the agenda was a zoning hearing board application for Sai and Krishna Desai at Three Aspen Court. The applicants were in attendance to review their application for rear yard setback relief of five feet to install sunroom on an existing concrete slab. The commission noted that relief is needed only for a small portion of the room, as the property line is not straight. The applicants have Homeowners Association approval and the support of their surrounding neighbors. The commission recommends that the board take no position at the zoning hearing board. Next, we had the sketch plan and JMZO amendment for BET Parking Core Apartment Building. The applicants have modified their plans since they presented in August of 2023. The plan now shows 120 units with no reduction in parking. They presented a few concept designs for the exterior, all conscious of the building's place in the historic district. Our members were in agreement that the density is still intense for the site, and would like to see further reductions. We'd like to see a parking ratio of two spaces per unit. We did prefer the plan's proposed indoor parking concept. The 300-foot facade is massive and overpowering, and we would like to see a reduction in the size or maybe multiple clustered apartment garden-style buildings. We're reluctant to support any changes to the ordinance without traffic studies that include the proposed steepleview, as both developments will be accessing major roadways via Center Avenue and Sycamore Street. We had no objection to the construction being entirely residential, and the corner shopping center where the Citizens Bank and Jakes's are to remain as is. Both lots are owned by BET. We discussed the proposed 45-foot height and had concerns about that. It was noted that the promenade is 40 feet high. We were open to the proposed 60-foot setback instead of the current required 15-foot setback to accommodate the slope of the land and the mature trees lining the Sycamore Street sidewalk. We discussed the ongoing issue of EDU availability from the Sewer Authority. The applicants are aware of and cooperative with the requirements of the historic district and will work with HARB. The commission was supportive of the concept of smaller rental apartments. BET would rent and maintain the building's units. And that was all we had. You have any questions?
Anybody?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment, I think, that the commission also received the email from the supervisors of Upper Makefield, was it?
We received a letter from the supervisors from Wrightstown Township.
Wrightstown Township, and they had some similar concerns. And one of the things that they mentioned was the wraparound, the core garage having cars in there, especially electric vehicles, which could be subject to fires, and they just felt that was unsafe way of handling cars next to living spaces, basically. That hasn't changed. I know there was some major concerns about the density. Right now, it's, it used to be eight times the, or 20 times, now it's eight times the recommended, the density for that zone. Is that correct? What was it, 20 dwelling units per acre, whereas there's only allowable 3.69?
Yeah.
So this has to be so, and this has to be approved by the jointure. That's why the letter from Wrightstown is significant, I guess.
Well, they are proposing a new ordinance for the jointure for a Parking Core Apartment Building. That would have to be approved by all three townships. And in Wrightstown, I don't have the letter in front of me, but in their letter, they did state that they don't feel that it's necessary and are not in favor of it.
What they're proposing is a new use, and I guess like it would be similar to the E-30 that Wawa got, but each township in the jointure had to have that use, had to have a place for that use. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's how it would work even with this, if they wanted to make an amendment to the JMZO?
I don't know. I'm going to ask Mr. Shankman about that.
No, it's only really relevant to Newtown Township, but because we're part of the jointure and Bucks County Planning Commission also has to weigh in on that. That's why they're involved, but it does not mean that they have to build these apartments or have space for these apartments in the other municipalities.
Okay.
It depends on the zoning.
All right. There were some other concerns, maybe a little bit about the traffic as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, and we're concerned the steepleview, right, you know, right around the corner, is being developed with 88 apartments and 12,000 square feet of retail space. And as the corner of Sycamore and Center sits right now, there's absolutely no room for any kind of improvements there.
And there was concern about the bridge at Center Street, correct? Right now, there was a problem with the walkway. It's a PennDOT concern.
They, I believe they repaired the wood. They replaced the wood on the walkway, but their study said that, I believe the study said that they believe the bridge, the structural integrity of the bridge may not be able to handle additional traffic. And PennDOT also noted that the bridge is functionally obsolete.
Okay. So they, there's all this development going on right adjacent to that bridge, and people are going to want to go back and forth across the bridge. I'm sure they're not going to walk. But, so what's the next step? I mean, they've come to you twice already, and you expect them to come back with some changes?
I hope, I hope they have changes, yeah. We did, I think they were open to our suggestions, but I believe we're just going to have to wait and see what they come back with. You know, we'd like to see a reduction in everything, the apartments, density.
Height.
So what would be the process? I mean, eventually, it comes before the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, yeah.
And we determine whether it should be sent on to the jointure, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, if they pursue the addition to the, the additional ordinance...
Well, they filed the text amendment without a challenge, so that's what they're hoping that we'll adapt. But we have to, we will take a look at that again, because they may change it, they may amend the text, we don't know. And they indicated at the last meeting that they intended to take all our information under advisement and perhaps come back to us with another, another concept plan.
But your recommendation was mostly about the density and the height of the building, basically. Those are the two biggest stumbling blocks, would you say?
I think the density, the number of apartments, the parking, allotting more parking spaces. Yeah, I mean, it's a massive, it's a huge development, huge.
Okay, but eventually, it would come before the Board of Supervisors, and you would make, the commission would make a recommendation?
Well, they're probably going to come back to us. We'll see if they come, if they're making changes, adjustments, they will come back to planning first, and then they will...
And then you make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors?
Yes.
And we take it from there. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, because I was listening in, I was a little unclear. Did they change the core, the core parking part of it? I was unclear when I was listening to it. It sounds like they were maybe going to do it in back, not, not encircling, right?
I believe in the center, it would, the apartments would surround the garage.
It would still surround the garage. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
With that, I'll pass it on to our chairman. Welcome back.
Yes, good evening. Good to be here. Let me try to get myself put together here. Yeah, let me skip my report, and I'll go last. That would give me a chance to put things together, so.
That'd be fine. I attended the zoning hearing board meeting on February 1st. I think our discussion about trying to decide on how to, how to deal with the issue of signs in general, I think we're going to have a discussion on that, which I think we should. I also attended by just listening in, the Planning Commission meeting, and we discussed the latest iteration of the BET proposed ordinance and the new plans for apartments. Some of the issues discussed were density, height, and infrastructure problems at that site. I think before they come back, we should make sure, if we can, that they address those issues, or else I don't see us moving forward. We should have a way to move forward. So if we could suggest that to them, and I hope you did, and I know you did, I was listening in for the meeting, I think that that would be appropriate, and you did give them a direction. At Monday's environmental advisory meeting, we discussed the Plastics Ordinance rollout. I'm also happy to say that Newtown Borough is just put out for advertisement, their Plastics Ordinance. So soon, we will, the Borough and the Township will be together on this issue, which I'm real excited about, because that's how it should have been the whole way through. We also spoke about some soil erosion issues on the Newtown Creek, specifically in the area of Carl Cedia Park. So I know there's some plans for Carl Cedia Park coming up that the Township has something to do with, so I would like to be brought up to speed on that, because I'm not sure what that supposed bridge that they're trying to build that connects the Borough and the Township there is, if it's good for us or bad for us. I've never heard anything about it, so I'd like to ask if we can, or ask the manager if we can have a little up-to-speed kind of, you know, presentation about that, if possible.
At a later time.
At a later, yes.
Yeah, it's time to prepare.
Yes. And finally, I'd like to talk about the Wawa that, of course, we know that is, it is now a thing, that it's happening. Litigation has been ended, they're going to build, and they've just decided to add more solar panels to their gas canopies, because they found out that in other states, it was working very well for them. And that was something that we had discussed, but they never, they never said that they were going to try to do that well. In fact, they are doing that. And for me, an environmentalist, that makes me happy that a corporation is going to do that. And I think that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Mack, do you have a report this evening?
Well, I think you're going to mention the Joint Zoning Council, which I was also present at, and thank you for helping me with the technical issues I had with the Zoom meeting. But I also wanted to mention that on February 21st, there'll be a meeting of the Human Relations Commission. They haven't met for a while because of a lack of a quorum, but now they have four members. There's still room for one more voting member and a couple of non-voting members. But on the agenda is going to be a presentation by Barbara Simmons on her work with Bucks County, different police departments in Bucks County and townships doing murals. And this is something that I had proposed to the Human Relations Commission as an educational activity a couple of years ago, so I hope she can help them see if they can support such a mural project in Newtown itself. So I look forward to that presentation. And tomorrow, I think I will be attending a briefing by the Bucks County NAACP at the Bucks County Community College on policing in Bucks County, and they have a report from different police departments, and I guess it's mostly Bucks County that they'll present at that meeting. That's it for me. Thanks.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Mack. Mr. Clabro. Okay. Was it mentioned that Mr. Davis is missing this evening? He wasn't, he isn't feeling well this evening, so that's why he is not here. I think I've got myself gathered together here. I did attend the February 1st zoning hearing board meeting, and there was a discussion about signs, looking at sign ordinances, and we can talk about that a little bit later. The, there were a couple of, Mr. Shankman, maybe you can help me remember which ones. It was a non-conforming structures ordinance for height, I believe, that should be coming to our Planning Commission. I just want to make sure that happened.
It did, that happened, and we recommended approval.
Okay. Oh, good. And how about the, I believe it was the electronic vehicle charging stations?
That has not been addressed yet.
Okay.
I think it's on the next agenda.
Okay, good. But it's in the works?
Yes.
Also attended the Planning Commission last week, and we did have, again, we had that discussion about sign, the sign ordinance, and whether, and I would boil it down to, do we want to take, number one, do we want to look at the sign ordinance, because we tried 10 years ago? It was about 10 years ago, and we decided to lay it to the side, because it was too complicated. So number one, do we want to look at it? And number two, how do we go about doing that? I know I have, I have a pet peeve about political signs, when they go up, when they come down. I'm also, let me just make sure I cut everything. I'm also...
Sorry, may I make a interjection here about political signs? I do believe they're covered under federal, under freedom of speech. So I don't know if you can restrict political signs.
Just put some time limits on, like, how soon can they go up and...
Well, usually, they're 30 days before and 30 days after, unless they're put on your own private property. I see signs out there all year round for certain candidates, and I don't think there's anything you can do about it.
No, you can't, private property, for sure.
Right. So I mean, to consume our time on political signs is, is not, I don't think it's a thing to do, it's other signs that we're concerned about.
Right, it is. But if, should we look, okay, so I could break that down to, do we want to even look at it, at the sign ordinance, and how much of it do we want to look at? I certainly would be willing to have that discussion. I'm also planning to attend the briefing on policing in Bucks County at the Community College tomorrow evening, so I'll see Mr. Mack there. And then also, there's a, a presentation via Zoom that I can share the information with the other supervisors, if you haven't gotten it already. It's about Blue Zones, and it's about communities seeking to help, help each other. And I need to see more about it, but it's something that's underwritten by Netflix. They did a documentary. There's a couple other entities, governmental entities, that I think, it's worth, it's a one-hour Zoom tomorrow afternoon, so I'm going to be Zooming from 4:00 to 5:00, and then I'm going to go to the Community College from 6:00 to 7:00. So I'll take some notes and bring, bring back what I think might be interesting. But again, it's how can, how can we help each other, help our neighbors, and do it in a way that helps them have a good, long, effective life? So I'll try, like I say, I'll bring, bring the information back, and I'll certainly share the Zoom if others didn't get it. That's, that's all I have. Public hearing on land development, and reports of officials we do have. And...
All right, the first item we have tonight is financial security release number one for 40 South State Street. This is the Pickering Manor project. Based on our inspection, the work completed, we recommend that the township release the amount of $629,376.55 to the developer from the financial security that's being held.
Right. Do we have such a motion? And then we'll call for a discussion. Do the motion to pay the financial security release number one to Pickering Manor?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, do we have a second? I'll make the second. So a motion and a second. Do we have any questions from the board? This is, this looks like it's 90% paid and 10% left as a residual.
Exactly, yeah, they've been complete for a while. More than likely, at the next meeting, you'll see the final, the final release, yep.
Very good. Any other just questions from the board?
I have a question generally. That, that was a lot of money, and we've had it for a little while.
Yeah, that's what happens, so they, they were required to provide the financial security for the project, for the public improvements, and it's held as a bond for the whole duration of construction until we determine that it's been constructed properly, and then at that point, it's released. So it was held for a while, but they're ready to close it out now.
Does it accumulate interest, or we don't earn anything from that?
If you do have an account that accumulates interest, you do, you have to give it back to the developer, you can't keep it.
Okay, so we don't make any money on that at all? Okay, thank you.
No, yeah, it's just, it's just held for this project, yep.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying the financial security release number one for Pickering Manor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries forward, zero.
All right, our next item is, we are seeking authorization to advertise the bids for the 2024 Liquid Fuels Road Program. This is the Township's annual road program that we do each year. We've structured the project similarly as we've done in the past, where we have a few roadways as considered as the base bid, provided to us by Joe Chivoni, the Public Works Director. And we're also including several alternate streets, so depending on how the bids come in, it gives the Township the option to award various alternate streets if they so choose. So the base bid locations that we're looking at for this year is Eagle Road, Farnsworth Way, Ashford Ray, North and South Ascot Court, Amarellis Lane, Lotus Place, and Campus Drive. This is roughly 1.3 miles of Township roadway. So we're seeking authorization to advertise this bid with the idea of opening the bids in the middle of March, and then hopefully by the end of March, awarding those bids and moving into construction. So happy to answer any questions on, on that project.
Questions?
Are there alternative roads? How many miles is it?
Roughly three miles of alternate roads, so there's 21 locations, so it gives us, it's nice, it gives the Township the pricing, so depending on where the bids come in, you know, we can award different streets.
Do you have any hope of how many miles from that list could be included? Do you have money for?
Usually, we, we do one or two alternate roadways, so, you know, a good goal would be one and a half miles to, you know, so the base bid would be 1.3 miles, and then maybe if we can get to one and a half, depending on where the pricing comes in.
Okay. I hope Wexley Drive and my development is one of those roads. Thank you.
And this could maybe be a list for future reference, I guess? But Mr. Chivoni usually picks those out.
Yep, he, yeah, he provides the locations, and then we, you know, create the bid package based on his recommendations.
Maybe, maybe there's a question for the, for the manager. We have the liquid fuel funds. We also have a little bit of ARPA money that's designated towards...
Yes, in the budget, it schedules each list where the funds would come from, so it's American Rescue Fund, General Fund, along with Highway Aid Fund.
Got it. I'm sorry, no.
I'm sorry, yeah. So the alternate locations, do they automatically become the, the base locations for next year?
Sometimes, some of them will, depending on the roads that Joe has in his inventory, they might get swapped out, but a lot of times in the past years, some of the roads that are on the alternate list that maybe don't get awarded this year move up to the base bid for the next year or the following year.
Thank you.
Do you have a road that you'd particularly like?
My age always grew.
Good. Any further questions from the board? Any from the, any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing the bid for the 2024 Liquid Fuels Road Program, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, there was never a motion or a second.
I heard a voice. I'm so sorry. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the board, from the public? I'll get myself straightened out here. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing to bid for the 2024 Liquid Fuels Road Program, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries forward, zero.
All right, our next item is a DVRPC LED streetlight project. We have Mike Fuller here tonight to give his presentation, so I'll, I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mike.
Hi, everybody. I think we have a few slides that we're going to put up. But basically, while that's coming... But basically, while that's coming up, I just want to mention, we talked about the streetlight project before. We did a feasibility, you approved moving on to the design phase. And, um, we're here to present the final project specification, the financials for that. Just to back up a little bit, so this is a program developed by DVR PC. They've helped over seventy-plus municipalities upgrade their, uh, streetlights from old technology to LED technology, primarily to generate operating cost savings and improve lighting performance and safety. And of those seventy-plus municipalities, ten of those are neighbors in Bucks County. We have presented a very, um, forty exhaustive, um, final project specifications, forty-plus pages, a more advanced executive summary presentation that you have. But we're here to just talk about a couple of the highlights from that tonight. So, we can go on to the next slide. I did want to mention, uh, it's relevant when we look at the economics of the project. When we did the feasibility study, we identified, and this is what you had on your PICO bills, one thousand five hundred and fifty-five, uh, streetlights were included in, and are currently included on your PICO, uh, bills. And when we did the investment grade audit, which was a GIS-based audit, looking at every location, identifying every location, which by the way, you get all that GIS data as part of the design phase, we came up with fifty-eight additional, uh, streetlights. So, those are, um, additional streetlights that are in, now in the scope of the project that weren't there at the time of the feasibility. So, we can go on to the next slide. We did, um, everything in the project is, in the project specification, essentially upgrading your utilitarian streetlights, but also all of your decorative streetlights, which is what the, the bulk of your township includes. Uh, I think it was on the previous slide, there's over thirteen-hundred, uh, four-side colonial decorative lights in all of your residential neighborhoods. The one item that is kind of a, an option that you can choose is what is the color temperature of these streetlights? There is no price difference, it's a minor, less than, uh, in, you know, five percent range, uh, performance difference in terms of lumen output, which is not observable to the human eye. Usually, you have to have about a twenty percent difference before the human eye would see that. So, essentially, you get the same performance, there's no price difference. But it's a, kind of a subjective decision as to, do you want a pure white light in your community? Or do you want a slightly warmer, uh, light source? And so, we did put together this one slide for you to consider. Technically, you can approve the project, uh, moving to construction tonight. This could be a follow-up item, or you can, we can discuss it now and decide what you would like because there is no impact on prices, I said. I do want to characterize just your options. Neither are bad options. We have many municipalities that select different options. And, uh, I would characterize the white light source as the four thousand Kelvin. That's what most people consider a pure white. So, it doesn't, it's not blue, it's not yellow, it's right down the middle, pure white. Most people that choose that is because they think that it gives a, a greater visibility, uh, in your community. So, maybe provides a sense of safety or, or just creates a more visible, uh, light source. The three thousand Kelvin, which is the warmer, I won't call it yellow, but it's a warmer white, uh, light source, is, most people view as a relatively higher comfort, uh, light source. And so, a lot of communities choose that. We don't recommend, uh, a solution to you, but when we had discussions with, uh, management, they said, you know, what have you seen other communities like Newtown Township that have the same type of residential communities? And, and, uh, generally, the, a similar, uh, size and, and location. What we found is that a lot of municipalities have been looking at a hybrid, uh, source. So, they actually go with the very, uh, the relatively comfortable three thousand K in the residential communities. But then their Cobra Heads on the streets, that your primary collector, in major streets, maybe they go four thousand K. So, that would be a possibility. But many municipalities go all three thousand K, many go all four thousand K. We have seen a shift recently over the, we've done four rounds of this program, and there has been a shift towards more three thousand K, uh, in recent years. So, um, that would be for your consideration. We could discuss that a little bit, uh, further, once I go through the last, uh, slide here.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Did you want to?
I've noticed in some of the residential areas, the lights are, that have been replaced are more, uh, they're white and brighter. I guess the, some LEDs already been installed in some locations.
Yes, when we do repairs and replacements, we, we use LED fixtures.
Yeah, my, personally, my preference would be, you know, white light. I think people would appreciate more security from that kind of lighting. But, uh, I hear what you're saying. You seem to be recommending this mixture, this hybrid approach. Can these be, I mean, as they wear out, I don't know how long the lifetime is, can they be changed? Like, can a three thousand fixture be upgraded to a four K?
Yeah, the, one of the benefits you're getting from this upgrade to LED is that it's very, very long life. I mean, has, the manufacturer offers a ten-year warranty on the fixture, which you, and if you look at the life ratings, they're, they're believing that this fixture is gonna last twenty-plus years. So, uh, when you order the fixture, it's not adjustable color-temperature-wise. So, uh, probably that would not be an option.
I don't think I'd be around at that time, twenty years from now, so. But, um, I, I don't know.
When we, when we let, uh, Mike, Mr. Fuller, uh, finish his presentation, then we'll come back to some more questions.
Is that how you want to do it?
Yeah, I should have.
Okay.
Mentioned that before.
Yep. So, the, uh, we'll come back, it sounds like we're gonna come back to the color-temperature selection. To go on to the financial, uh, we're showing you two options here. I think the, the first one is really probably, uh, what I've heard was more preferred by, uh, management and certainly is a better economic, uh, story. But the base upgrade, uh, which does include a manual control with it. So, there actually is a little dimmer switch inside the fixture that, that if need be, for some reason in the future, you need to adjust the light level, you can do it, but it's a manual process. Then we also offer a, a network control system, which is a completely connected, uh, system that you can, uh, manage and control and maintain all of your lights through a connected network system. It's much more, uh, expensive. But the base upgrade solution, uh, you're gonna generate over forty-three thousand dollars in operating cost savings per year. That's primarily coming from lower PICO bills by lowering your energy, uh, consumption of the streetlights. The project cost for that base upgrade after rebates, uh, is seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, your outlay is actually eight hundred and seventy thousand, but we anticipate a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, PICO rebate with that. That equates to a payback of sixteen point five years. So, uh, over time, the, the savings are gonna pay for the project. The twenty-year net savings, when you, uh, take the outlay, uh, or the net project cost minus the twenty years of operating cost savings is a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of net savings that the township can invest in other projects. The, the second row here is the, with the lighting management system. The annual operating costs are actually a little bit less because we factor in maintenance costs, and it's a more expensive system to maintain over time. So, there's higher, we assume higher maintenance costs, uh, over the years. You can see the price jumps up to one point, uh, two million, uh, so the payback period is much longer. So, in this case, you're not, uh, the, the savings are paying for a portion of the project, but obviously not paying for all of the project, like the base upgrade option. The, the primary reason that municipalities look at this is so they can really proactively manage their lighting system and, uh, that they can, for, the biggest example is that they want to know when outages occur before they are called in from residents. But, you know, that's a pretty big price tag to pay for that additional, uh, uh, you know, maintenance, proactive maintenance, uh, approach. But, um, so those are the two options that, that we're presenting to you in the feasibility, or in the final project specification, and you would select one of those, and you would select eventually the color-temperature, uh, preference that you have. So, uh, the final slide is just to talk about our timeline here. You do have a resolution, uh, in front of you for, uh, today. So, that would be deciding whether you want to move on to construction with the final project specification that we provided. If you choose to do that, we would immediately move into signing an installation services agreement. DVR PC, I didn't mention it, but we did, DVR PC does all the procurement for this project, including the installer, the selected installer, so everything's already been pre-negotiated, and, and you get to piggyback off of that, that procurement effort. Armor and Sons out of Langhorne is the, uh, is our program installer for all, uh, the four counties that we're doing this work in. So, uh, they would be doing the work. And once the, um, installation services agreement is finalized, then we have about four to six weeks to get materials in. And so, we'd be looking at probably a, you know, maybe late Q one, but more like a Q two, um, install timeframe. We anticipate about six to eight working weeks to do your, uh, project. It's a fast-moving project, it's a moving operation, and really will have no impact on traffic or anything else, um, in the township. Okay. So, that's what I had for you tonight.
Are you open to questions?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Nakano, you have.
All right, I have a lot of questions for you, for you. You, uh, the main, the manual, you mentioned a, uh, manual control.
Yes.
It's set up by some kind of switch, or is it a dial? Or can, can it be a range of brightness, or?
Yeah, it's, it's got a dimmer with like ten pre-selected positions. The installer, what we do, and it's all factored into the project cost that we have, we over-engineer the fixture a little bit, so it provides a higher lumen output than where we actually designed it to. And then the installer, at time of installation, they set it to the appropriate, uh, dim level. And they've done this over and over for many of the projects.
You recommend the, the dim level, because I'm just thinking of one of these, uh, lights outside my bedroom window, for example, I think is too bright. And I call in and say, hey, can you dim this? And you can't dim it with a computer because you have to do it manually. And I see from Amwar and Sons, uh, they charge forty-five dollars for the bucket truck, and that's not counting the labor of seventy-five dollars an hour. So, you would have to have Armor come over there and, and work the dimmer switch? Or could this be done by the Public Works Department with a ladder?
It, it, it requires a bucket truck, but let's just step back a little bit. So, you know, the design that we've put together here has been used over and over for all seventy municipalities, and it's worked quite well. And basically, we designed to the road classification. So, we, we're designing to local roads. This usually comes up.
I'm talking about the, the ones in the neighborhoods. I'm not talking about the ones in the highway and stuff.
Well, we consider those residentials, the lo, local roads also. So, um, we will set it to a relatively, you know, a comfortable level that, that most municipalities have found acceptable. It's, it's comparable to what you have, uh, currently. So, the, that, that manual control is really for one-off situations. We don't like to stray from the standardized lighting system. I mean, the, the lights are there to provide safety, uh, for the roadway and in the residential communities, the sidewalks, so. But in those few times where you do have to make an adjustment, uh, now, actually, usually you need a bucket truck for the Cobra Heads, but for the, uh, for the, uh, residential ones, you may be able to do it with, with the ladder. But it's, it's not, uh, to be, it's not super easy. You gotta get into the fixture and you gotta make an adjustment.
I imagine. So, having a computer control by Wi-Fi is super easy. And I've read where one of the advantages of having that is if there's an area that has a particular crime problem or people lurking around, there's been a lot of complaints, the police, the police officer can use his, uh, control to adjust the lighting in those areas temporarily to, uh, make it safer, uh, by upping the intensity. So, we wouldn't have that, uh, kind of capability with the manual control.
That, that's true. And you'd have that functionality to do what you're talking about. We have not had any municipalities use it for that purpose. So, it would take, you know, whoever was controlling, it would have to have access to the system. And it's, it's, it's not just like an, an app on your phone that you can just, you know, change light levels easily.
Then I was reading something from some other universe, I guess.
Well, there's also a cost involved for getting that ability. So, um, let me, uh, there's some other questions I have.
John, can I just say that the whole idea here is, um, that residential areas have a, a softer light, than a high-traffic area? So, it's not necessarily that your home, the one outside your home, is gonna be different than the others on your street. The residential areas, uh, in this package, and what I would prefer, would be the, uh, softer light, and the high-traffic areas would be the brighter light. So, I don't think it comes down to a one-off light, uh, uh, outside your house or anybody else's house.
I was just quoting something I read that in another municipality, probably in Florida or someplace, that had these lights, you know, were able to do that sort of thing. In your specifications that you gave us, you mentioned, uh, that you could, if desired, prepare and or update municipal lighting ordinances. Do we have any such thing, is that, that needs to be updated or anything? Okay. The other, I guess, uh, when it comes time to do this resolution, I think, uh, we need to specify which option that we want to have in the resolution. But we'll get to that. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Clavo?
Yeah, I have a brief question. These, these lights are gonna be considerably brighter than the lights that are out there now, correct?
That is a, it's, brightness is a very subjective, um, analysis. I mean, you, you have a lot of high-pressure sodium right now that are yellow. When you go to a white light source, it may not put out as many lumens, or it may put out the same amount of lumens, but that white light is gonna be perceived as, as probably brighter by most. Most, uh, let me say this, most municipalities have the perception that there's been a, a slight increase in the brightness. But that's because your streetlights have depreciated, they're old, the lenses are all, you know, uh, maybe, you know, very, uh, dirty and, and decayed.
Yeah, 'cause I, I've seen when they clean, when they put cleaner lenses in, it's, it's brighter just because of that fact that the yellowing, uh, isn't there anymore. Uh, my question is, is, um, if you have a street, uh, street scape lights that are, say, within, I don't know, twenty yards of each other, i- i- is it feasible to have all those lamps, uh, those streetlights, the same, same intensity in, in lighting? Or can you, can you do eve, ev, every other one? And maybe the one that you're not doing is a lesser, lesser volume of light?
We've never done that. With street lighting design, you want sta, standardization and consistency because they're there for a purpose. Even in the residential areas, those are kind of wayfinding lights along the way. So, it's, it's important to not have a distraction of different, different levels of light. So, if it's a local residential road, they'll all be lit the same, outside of some special exception where you would have to like change one fixture or, you know, a small neighborhood of fixtures for some special reason.
'Cause it could, that could be very, make for the street to be very bright.
Yeah.
They could land airplanes.
I don't.
The Trenton Airport could land an airplane.
Yeah, these have been installed in a lot of, um, you know, of adjoining communities that you, you know, can look at. I mean, Middletown Township, Newtown Borough, Langhorne Manor, New Britton Buckingham, New Hope, Tully Town, Pendell, Warrington, Ben Salem, you know, and all those were consistent, you know, light, streetlights. Streetlights are not twenty feet apart, they're, they're usually much, much further.
I said twenty yards.
Yeah, even twenty yards is probably pretty close for even most streetlights. Yeah, they're on a lot of.
Have you been up and down North and South Drive?
Uh, I've been all, all around the township. I don't know about those specific. I don't know about those specific drives.
They're not that far apart.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, and right now, we do have some that are off, some that are on. It gives a sufficient amount of light. I'm just thinking if you put all these lights, fixtures in all these, it'll be so bright. There are some townhouses that are up against the road that if that light shines in their window, they're not going to be able to go to sleep at nighttime. That's how bright it is.
So one thing we have done is we've had, so we've got these designed to the appropriate level for the road classification. We have worked with municipalities that if they had that concern heading into construction, we would have Armor come in and say, okay, we're going to do five fixtures at the specified level. And then if people want to review it at that time and see if they deem it too bright, you know, we could make an adjustment to the project specification and the dim level at that time before they go through and they do all 1,300 other, you know, fixtures. That's a possibility. We can be flexible in that way, too. But again, it's really important to just standardize. And usually, we may get complaints about there's too much light here from one resident, but there are 10 other residents around that same light that don't have any concerns. So it's tough to satisfy everybody. So that's why we try to go to design standards that have worked, you know, pretty consistently over all the municipalities.
I think one great thing about LEDs that you'll notice right away is the fact that just like when you change the light bulbs in your home, and now you get, you know, bulbs that are better for the environment, AKA LED lights. And the type of light that they emit is a different kind of light that is easier on the eyes. So even if you see the 4,000 Kelvin, it's not going to be the same as what you're seeing now. It's going to be a much, it's going to be brighter, but much easier on the eyes, and you're going to have much better visibility with LED lights. Would I be correct in saying that?
Yeah, and the only, it just comes back to the difference to some people prefer that warmer light. Most people do view that as more comfortable to look at.
Right.
But the white, some people like it because it seems like it provides greater visibility.
Well, I think this is, you know, the hybrid approach with the neighborhoods being one thing and the other roadways that are more traveled being a little brighter. I think that's the way to go.
When we have complaints, which are a very small percentage of projects, I mean, one or two on installations that are thousands of fixtures, they're usually too bright and they're almost always in residential areas. Nobody's really concerned about the color temperature on a, you know, high-mounted major roadway overhead because people are focused on the road ahead of them, not looking up at the lights.
I think everybody will be very happy with it. My experience with LEDs, they're much, it's a much more natural light than the old-fashioned lights. So I think this is great. Thank you.
Let me ask a couple of questions and then maybe we'll get a, see if we can get a motion in a second. And we can, yeah. My questions are around the finances. If I'm looking at this right, it starts paying in reduced energy costs in year one.
Yes.
Like $43,000 savings. And if I'm looking at this right as well, at the 20-year point, we'll have a savings of $153,000.
Right.
And I guess from, at the 16.5-year point, that would be the zero where we pay the incentive.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you pay the project costs.
Return on investment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. If you pay the project costs upfront, that's how long it would take for the savings to match what you paid upfront.
Yeah. And I know we haven't already budgeted for financing. We've already budgeted some of those numbers, so there's a way to do this. Okay. Let me see if we can get a motion in a second and then we'll go on. Is there a motion to proceed with the LED streetlight conversion project by way of adopting a resolution for construction?
I would make that motion.
Do we have a second? I would second it. So we have a motion in a second now, Mr. McAfee would like to continue.
Yeah, I looked over the resolution. There are a couple of things in here. It doesn't mention which option, base or you have the, you know, the one with the manual control. Which one are we, is the resolution going to specify? It hasn't been laid out.
How do we fill that in?
Yeah, it doesn't have a selection for that. The board usually weighs in at this point and says that, you know, you're approving it for this option, either the base solution or with the network control.
Okay, so the way you're reading it, Mr. Chairman, is this resolution is for the base installation? The base option?
I think the record will reflect that we chose the, that we're choosing the base option. And I think another, the other question that we need to ask is the temperature.
Yes.
So we want the 3,000s, the 4,000s, or the hybrid approach? And if we're going to adopt this resolution and we go through with construction, I would vote for the hybrid approach as well. But.
I have no problem with the hybrid approach. I'm just, you know, wondering about being flexible and, you know, the future will come upon us and we'll still be perhaps behind because we're manual and not controlled by, not controlling anything by computer. But then again, we wouldn't be hacked by China, I guess, shutting off all our lights, so.
And there's, to me, there's an appreciable cost difference for that, too.
We really have found that the municipalities that have done the lighting management system have over 1,000 of the Cobra heads and not, they don't have such a large mix of residential. So it's, you would not be uncommon to most others like you to not use the network control system.
Can I ask another question or should we vote on this first, I guess?
Sure, ask another question. I'd like it to be clear before we vote.
Okay. The rebates, you mentioned in the appendix B, PICO Smart Ideas, for example. Does your cost estimate take into consideration that we would get these rebates?
Yes. Yeah, when we show the net project cost of $720,000, that reflects net of receiving the PICO rebates, which are estimated at $150,000 for this project.
So we would have to get $150,000 in rebates to make that $700,000 number?
Right, it's part of our turnkey process that we submit for you on all those. And basically, we deal with the PICO rebate team we have for four years. And it's pretty prescriptive. They know what we're installing. We know what we're getting in the rebate. And so those rebates have always come through extremely close, if not right on to the estimates.
So you don't anticipate any problems with that?
I do not anticipate any problems with that. We've already told them these projects are coming. And as soon as it's approved, we reserve the funds right away before we even order materials.
Now, not that I'm going to understand it, but you mentioned there was an appendix F. C appendix F, we didn't get appendix F. But it's some kind of analysis that shows you how you came up with the lifetime of the light. It's something that I'm probably, some kind of analysis that I probably wouldn't understand, but just to call your attention to it.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I've never noticed that. I'm not sure. I think that may have been, we intended to do it, but appendix A, I think, talks through how, was that referring to like maintenance savings?
It was referring to how you looked at the intensity of the light and figured how long it would last, that kind of thing, I think. It's a minor point, don't worry about it. I trust.
Yeah, the typo in that would be any reference to appendix F because we've never delivered it.
It's a photometric analysis comparison.
Yeah, we did that back in round two when we first started this, and we've been using the same design over and over. So I think that appendix got dropped.
No problem.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Are you ready to call a question? All those in favor of considering the adoption of adopting the resolution for construction of the DVRPC LED streetlight conversion project? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero. Now, do you have what you need to proceed as far as the hybrid and as far as the?
Yep, hybrid and the base solution. That's what we need on the record. And then from there, we'll move forward and work with management on the installation services agreement.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Okay, Ms. Calabria, is there anything else to report?
That's all I have tonight. Happy to answer questions if the board has any.
Going once, going twice. Yeah, we do have one question. Ms. Snyder?
I just want to ask about the Lower Dullington Trail and the guard rail. Have any timeline on when we can finalize that and have a completed punch list?
We, yeah, we're working with the contractor to get their schedule back. We had some, you know, we're working basically on the payments at this point. So we're working through that with them. So I'm hoping in the next month that we can have this closed out.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Solicitor.
No report tonight.
No report tonight. I saw your microphone on, I just was wondering. Okay. Mr. Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $5,548,717. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. We have Chief Hearn for his monthly chief's report this evening. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief Hearn.
Good evening, board members. January 2024, police report, we documented 2,655 calls for service. We logged 23,500 miles on our patrol fleet. We had 18 arrests, one for burglary, one for domestic assault, one for terroristic threats at the school, two thefts, three outstanding warrants from other jurisdictions, three narcotics possessions, and seven DUIs. There were 11 cases referred to detectives, which include, some of which included a residential burglary, a robbery that resulted from a counterfeit transaction and a store employee attempted to intervene, two terroristic threats, a couple thefts, two theft investigations, one was a narcotic overdose. We had 86 traffic crashes for the month, 17 involving a deer. We had 175 traffic citations issued and 195 warnings issued. There was no truck enforcement details as a result of the weather conditions. And our only notable job in the month of January was the, as you know, the pro-Palestinian protest march with the counter-Israeli support contingent that was held on January 17th in Newtown Township. The march resulted in no injuries, no significant issues, and no reported damages while our department members protected all parties' constitutional rights. I would also, at this time, like to thank my regional partners for their assistance, including Northampton, Lower Makefield, Upper Makefield, Middletown, Buckingham, the sheriff's departments, and the county EMA. Public service announcements, a couple of things. Part-time seasonal employment opportunities for school crossing guard. If you're interested, submit your letter of interest and application to the police department. If by chance you hire house cleaners to clean your property, do not get them from online services. Do your own vetting to make sure who you're allowing inside your residence prior to cleaning because sometimes they take things that don't belong to them. And also, other jurisdictions are also having an increase in theft from residential mailboxes. So I encourage you to drop off your mail inside the post office. Don't put your flag up and put it in your own mailbox when it's heard. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, you weren't here last meeting, but we heap tons of praise on you for the way you handled that march. And again, since you weren't here, tell you right now, you did such a phenomenal job.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Thank you.
We all sent accolades, you can see it on YouTube.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Chairman, I have two other capital purchase items for the board's consideration this evening, first of which is the authorization to purchase a 2024 Ford Expedition for the Emergency Services Department in the amount of $79,552.37 through Co-Stars from Holland Auto. We had initially budgeted $90,000. This is clearly under budget and it's being paid for out of the fire capital plan.
Do we have a motion to that effect? To authorize the purchase of a 2024 Ford Expedition? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second? Any questions for the manager on that? Again, there's a good $10,000 difference between what was budgeted and what it costs to the good. Seeing no other questions or discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Ford Expedition for the Emergency Services Department in the amount of $79,552.37? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second item under our report is the authorization to purchase tire balancing, purchase tire balancing equipment for the Public Works Department. This purchase is being made from Mohawk Lifts in the amount of $31,408 through Sourcewell Procurement Program. We had budgeted a total of $35,000 for that piece of equipment. So again, clearly under budget.
A motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? I would just like to say one thing. I think our Public Works Department does a lot of in-house maintenance. And this is something that would, you know, really, really help them save us money in other ways. So. Any other comments from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing the purchase of a tire balancing equipment from Mohawk Lifts in the amount of $31,408.06 through Sourcewell? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero.
That concludes our report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that brings us to minutes, bills, bills list and reports. Mr. McA, you're back on.
Okay. I make a motion to approve our minutes of the January 24, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes of January 24, 2024? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero.
Okay, I make a motion to pay our bills according to the February 14, 2024 bills list
A motion, do we have a second? I'll second that motion. A motion and a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
Get out of.
Yes. Yes, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I like the new report, but I, I think I missed the, is the Toronto Dominion Bank listed on here?
Is that TD, TD Bank?
Ah, yes. Toronto Dominion Bank, of which, I don't know. We have a lot of local banks in the area, but we're doing business with Toronto Dominion Bank, which if anyone is to Google Toronto Dominion Bank, they will see an abundance of scandals that that bank has been involved in, from Ponzi schemes to pay, pay-for-play. So I don't know why we're doing business with this bank. But anyway, I just want to emphasize that because naturally I will be voting no on the bills list. Can we maybe have some discussion at some point? What's, what do we have in that bank? What would it take to get out of that bank? And what the alternative would be? I haven't seen a, a report on that.
Yeah, we haven't done a report. We're, we're in the process of updating our financial software, so we've, we've been busy with that. So I can ask our finance director to look into it. Basically, what TD Bank is at this point, since we've moved all that money to, to invest, Pliget, I'm sorry, is, it's a placeholder. So we transfer the money back to them to pay for it. And it's also the processor of the credit cards.
Credit cards.
Pliget does not have credit cards. So that's essentially all it is left.
Well, what other banks do have credit cards that we can?
Well, there's lots of other banks that have credit cards.
First National, Penn Community, what is it, Wilmington? These are somewhat local banks that we could use.
No, we can, we can look into it.
Don't use local banks, you'll be gobbled up by these big conglomerates and they'll all be dealing with Toronto Dominion Banks and Wells Fargo's and Banks of America and so on, whereas the, the small community banks will go by the wayside. So Wells Fargo is not acceptable either, or Bank of America? Well, I'm sure the big, the bigger the banks, the more the scandal. But, but, I mean, I used to be in the banking industry. I, I worked for small, local banks. And I, I think small, local banks are more concerned about the community in regards to, even if you were to walk in, Mr. Mack, they would probably know who you are. As you go to the bigger, big conglomerates, you're just an account number. I, I just think it, it's the same thing. I mean, I don't want to get on a soapbox here, but the same thing is if we don't buy local newspapers, we won't have newspapers anymore. Same thing with local banks. We don't, we don't patronize local banks. We won't have them anymore. So I'm just, that, that's just my, my take on it, and that's why I don't vote for TD Bank, or shall I say Toronto Dominion Bank.
And we have a plan. Mr., Mr. Lewis is going to give us some information, and maybe we can make that determination.
Okay, I think I have one more motion to make.
Do we, do we vote on that one?
Oh, did we?
I don't think, I don't think we voted on it. We had a motion and a second, but all those in favor of the bills, paying our bills is listed on the bills list for February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And we know why. Okay. Motion carries three, zero.
Okay, I make a motion that we, according to our bills list of February fourteen, twenty twenty-four, to transfer funds of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board about our inter, inter-fund transfers? Seeing any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our inter-fund transfers is listed on the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four bills list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero. All right, that brings us to our second round of public comment. Anyone who would like to give a public comment, please come, come to the podium and turn the microphone on and introduce yourself and where you're from.
John DeApril again, Newtown Grant, biggest and best. Things are brought up tonight since you were just talking about banks. In my recollection, I might be wrong, Citibank is not U.S.-owned, Santander isn't, and Bank of America. I talk about scandals. A lot of these banks had scandals. Wells Fargo is a, is a big one for scandal. You won't put your money locally. Penn Community, I believe, is, is headquarters in Bucks County. So I don't know. Look into that. Talked about traffic earlier, about the apartment building and, and traffic going across the bridges to the borough. Over ten years ago, PennDOT wanted to replace one of those bridges because it's so old and it was rated that it was failing and all that stuff. And the borough and the township shot it down. They said it was a stark. I mean, you know, how you gonna be stark when a car falls in there, you know, person falls off or whatever. You know, you gotta, you gotta stop it somewhere where the bridges have to be replaced, replace them. Doesn't matter, they were built in the seventeen hundreds. That's one of the reasons why you probably should replace it. But that's a fact. I mean, you look into that. It was over ten years ago. The borough gonna come in with the pla, the stupid plastic bag ordinance. I mean, it's okay, you cut out the plastic bags because, you know, you say it's making a mess of everything, but you're not stopping all the other plastic stuff, and you guys know that. Brought up murals, putting murals in the township. I mean, you know, it's bad enough these builders want Newtown to look like the city. You don't have to put murals all over the place because if you look, I still have, you know, people, a lot of people live in Philly because that's where I grew up. You know, their murals, the taxpayer funded due to some arts thing. And, you know, the fact that they get graffiti on them all the time and are constant, constantly having to repair them, you know, it's costing the taxpayers money. I mean, that, that, that's ridiculous. Don't put any mural, murals in Newtown. We don't want it to look like the city. Then you talked about the LED lights. I mean, I keep on bringing it up with LED lights. You want to put them on the streets, but any new business and stuff, you tell them with the outdoor lights, you still, no LEDs. I mean, you went through, I don't know how, three years of the stuff with Wawa, and that's one of the big things you had with LED lights. And even before that, go, go way back, new businesses came in even before they did the, the Village of Newtown with the outdoor lights being LED and stuff. No, no, you can't do that. We got rules against it and stuff. I mean, it's crazy. And, you know, you go with those lights, you should have the brightest lights because most of the areas in, in the township are, are too dark. You know, I live in Newtown Grant, woman and a dog were hit last year, you know, right on a drive. Constantly seeing people jogging with no reflectors on, dark clothes. Maybe they're not too bright, you know, but they're, you're hard to see. Kids on bicycles without reflectors and lights should have bright lights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeApril. Anyone else?
There's.
Yes.
Did the town?
That's right.
Did the township get an email from Vince Alfredi?
Yes, I ordered it.
So can I read part of it, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes, you can.
Okay. It's rather long, but I'm going to just try to pick out the highlights.
How long is it?
Well, he gave me permission to make it shorter, so.
Okay.
He's talking about the Bet Investments Apartment Complex Proposal. He says the apartments will need utility hookups for water, sewer, electrical, et cetera. There will be demands placed on the infrastructure supporting these utilities. He's talking about the parking garage proposed by the developer provides for one point five where he believes two parking spaces per apartment is more appropriate. The developer is trying to attract upscale renting, and he says you need EV charging stations, et cetera. He's talking about wanting to know how tall the proposed parking garage is. And he has another comments about the parking garage, about the weight of the structure because with electric vehicles, I didn't know this, he said that electric vehicles weigh one thousand pounds more than their gasoline-powered counterparts. The garage and vehicles will cause tremendous stress on the underlying ground formations. And I believe the township planner has made comments regarding that as well. He believes it's a good idea. Does it set a precedent hampering the ability of the Board of Supervisors to plan for Newtown's present, future use by doing this variance of the zoning? He recommended that we contact Yarley's Board of Supervisors to learn about the new construction of apartments across from Shady Brook. Excuse me? Lower Makefield. He said those apartments were also three stories. I didn't know that those apartments look pretty big if they're three stories. And anyway, that's his comments from Mr. Vince Alfredi.
And we have those, each of us received that as well. So thank you, and thank you, Vince. That brings us to old business. Any old business? I, there's something I'd like to mention. I was wondering if we would like, over a period of time, last couple of months, we've had a couple of issues come up that we, that someone has mentioned, well, why don't we have a work session? And two, two of the outlawing issues that are worth, might be worth discussing are the sign ordinance, as I mentioned earlier, and making some final decisions and getting the process started for our AV upgrade. So, I mean, I'd like to propose having a work session if, there might be a couple of options there. I think our scheduled work session on the books on the calendar is March eighteenth, Monday, March eighteenth. Another option could be before, before a regular board meeting. So say we came, came in at six and had a, a work session from six to seven and then started a meeting. So I don't know how people feel about that. Do we want, do we, number one, do we want to have a work session on those issues and what, what days are preferred? How to schedule it?
I think a separate day for the workshop because the discussion can go on for quite a while, especially about the signage ordinance. And I need time to prepare for that in any case, so March is a good time.
Is it possible to have both at, at the same time? Both the sign and?
Yes. That's, that's my, that's my suggestion. Mr. Clabro, sound, sound okay to you?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Mack. I think that it should be a separate meeting because i- i- if we have it before our regular scheduled televised meeting, we're, we're pretty much pressed for time.
We're gonna be watching the clock the whole time.
Exactly. So, I mean, is there any, is there any reason we can't have? I know Monday is a holiday. Could we have it on Tuesday this, this month? I, I think with that conflict with the planning commission or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, we, we, we can pull rank. We, we, we can have the room instead of them.
We could.
Well, no, we're before. No, I'm just, it's just a suggestion, but I could, I could wait till March. It's no big deal.
Okay. That's, that's my thought. We have it on the books. If we start looking for other dates, it might take forever. Okay, good. Any other old or new business?
I do have one thing, please. Please don't call our fire department for emergency services. They've been getting calls instead of calling nine-one-one. People are calling the fire department directly for emergencies, and that's not appropriate. And the chief asked me to pass that along.
And if, you know, if you call the wrong place, it takes more time to get help.
Right.
So, nine-one-one.
Yep.
You know, we always said in Brooklyn, you call the fire department because they always come.
All right. Okay. Any other business for this evening? Seeing none? And without qualification, without adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming, without exception.